Hey, I'm not here Thursday. And apparently Grant's gonna be.
He's on Zoom. All right. Good afternoon. Welcome. This is the Marion City Council Work Session for Tuesday, June 21st, 2022. Councilmember Harper is with us on Zoom this evening. Okay, first item that's marked by staff for discussion is the Central Plaza Design Update. Who's handling that? Tom?
I'll handle that. Thank you, Your Honor. Tonight, I'd just like to give you a little brief update. It's not too long, but just kind of give an update on where we are with the Marion Uptown Central Plaza Project. As you are well aware, we entered into a contract back in, I think, February timeframe for the, to take the Uptown Central Plaza Project from a concept to construction documents and design and final design. I don't know that we've given much of an update since that time, so I think it's pertinent that we do that now. Just for a little background, you'll recall that back, I can go back a little bit into the, almost to 2015, when the Roger Brooks Plan was being developed, and I think it is important just to talk a little bit about this. Remember the branding initiative? One of the biggest key pieces out of that was to create a plaza, and it was really, really drove home a lot of conversation at that time about what to do in the uptown. So that was kind of where some of that was, was first conversed. And then, as you'll recall, in the Imagine X process, which the city and the chamber engaged residents in in a grassroots effort to develop the, what was identified as the future four, which is four big ideas to continue on after the Imagine Eight process. Of those four, one was called, one was called Heart of It All, which was the continuation of the streetscape and further design of the, of the uptown area, including an extension of the uptown artway. And then ultimately, the three plazas that were presented in the Uptown Master Plan. The master plan was adopted, was adopted in, I believe, 2021, and then we went straight into the design contract for the Central Plaza. So that's kind of, that got us to where we, we got RDG on board to kind of help develop out the vision and refine the conceptual design of the Central Plaza that was included in the Uptown Master Plan. Next slide. So where we are today, we, we, we're through the pre-design and programming, we're through the schematic design, and we're kind of in design development. As you can see, we're, we're moving forward. And through construction documents in August, September, November timeframe, and hoping to get to the phasing, to the bidding process, late fall, early winter. We are on schedule, but I would be quick to point out that we want to make sure that we get this right. And so if we need to adjust, you know, that's been one thing that we've talked about with the consultants and internally as staff and with the committees that we're working forward or working through is that we don't want to rush this process. It's a pretty big, it's probably one of the most, well, it's the central corridor piece, and the community is watching this project, so we certainly want to make sure that we get it right when we do it. So just so you're aware, we're, we're, we're sitting pretty good on timeframe, but as we continue, if there are things that are lagging, we'll certainly bring it to the attention of council and let you know where we are as we provide updates. Next slide. So I know you can't read this. I can't even read it, but it's something for me to talk off and then talk about a little bit, just as far as the design process. So really, what we've been focused on since the kickoff has been two items. One is the, the site design. The, so we took the, the plaza area and really have focused on the, the grading, the key elements that were identified in the conceptual plan, their location, and really the details of how it lays out in the uptown. Now, we had a conceptual design for the site, so we really were asking the steering committee and the technical committee, what needs to change? Are there things that need to change? And ultimately, I think there's been some minor decisions that have refined the program, but from a site design perspective, we really haven't tweaked too much from the original conceptual design. The item that has really taken some time over the last probably 30 to 40 days has been a conversation surrounding the depot. And really what we've been focused on is what's going to happen and what that depot is going to look like ultimately in, at the end of the Plaza Project. It's a pretty considerable icon in the community, and we might want to make sure we get it right. And one of the focal points has been what to do with the bathrooms. Are we going to have interior space that's going to be climate controlled? Do we want to provide access in and out of the building 24/7, or is it just at certain times? And then also, the, the building itself has been considered as a part of the mechanical units, and how is the, the not-so-pretty stuff that's related to having an ice loop or the ice or the water features? So those water features, as you recall, are sprays, the fountain area, as well as a small stream runnel, if you will, that you can, that, that functions where kids and adults can get their feet in there and they can wade, but it's not deep enough to really cause any problems. So it's a pretty cool little feature, but it does come with the same component trees of a swim pool. You have to treat the water. You have to really address those concerns. So we're looking at the depot as that building that would have all the mechanicals and equipment that's associated with controlling and the maintenance of those items. So next slide. So I know this isn't the most dynamic shot, but I've saved the best picture for, for last, just so you know, so something to look forward to. So as you can see, the depot is A, and the canopy is the B. There's some considerations of, of expanding the west edge, but we're not going to get into that today. I just want to let you know. I know there's a couple folks on the, on the council that are on a steering committee. There's still some technical details within the steering committee that need to be vetted before we bring forward a proposal to the city council. The stage area here, C is identified. We haven't got to the point where we're even addressing that at this point. It's a conversation piece, but neither the technical committee nor the steering committee have really weighed in too heavily on that, that piece of the, of the, of the plaza. One key element was the ice loop, which is identified here in N. You can kind of see it. There was a lot of conversation about whether that should be circular, whether it should be one sheet of ice, whether it should be a loop trail. Ultimately, it was determined that the, the ice loop was the way to go, and that's the direction that we've, the steering committee has placed. So we've, we're showing that here and illustrating in the, in the site plan. You can see that there's, there are a number of green spaces that are, that remain even in the area that's been identified as the plaza. I would point out that I is the place sculpture area. And just quickly, if you recall, that is a, a circular playground area that'll have the rubberized surface material similar to Laux Park, so it's, it's, it's a really nice surface. It's not wood chips and such. And then that structure is envisioned to be something not normally seen at a playground. So this would be an art slash play structure. So it's, it's got some aesthetic appeal to it as well as being a functional piece of playground equipment. And we have not gotten into the details of that yet, but we will soon. I would point out that, you know, the, the holiday, the peace tree is, is identified, been identified to be located here, and then K identifies a place for the Plaza Sculpture. If you remember when in the conceptual plan, there was a, the concept of having a pretty iconic, a pretty large iconic piece of art at the north end of the plaza. So this is the general site layout of how the plaza is coming together. Again, we're still going to be vetting the details, you know, what's that place structure look like? What's, what do those garden areas look like? Where's the stage you're going to go? Those are all still decisions that need to be made. Next slide.
Ryan's going to say something. Yeah, so just, just for clarification, so the technical committee and the steering committee would still continue to vet those aspects to develop the recommendation up to the city council. So the decisions are going to be in the form of recommendations, not necessarily decisions, and then we're off and running. One other thing, and I'm sure Tom was going to talk about it, so I don't want to steal his thunder, but when it comes as a recommendation, one of the things that we've talked about is, is performing a community survey of such to, to get, to gather some additional input, just make sure that the work, that the folks are following along, they understand the, the history, how we got here, what we're working on. And so as that's, as the technical committee and steering committee are working to finalize that, that is also another component that we want to do. Staff has been doing a number of public outreach. We had the city showcase. We had a number of residents stop by, got positive response from there, but we also want to make sure we're doing what we can to, to continue to, to engage the community and just solicit as much information as possible, so we can share that with you all.
Thanks, Ryan. And, and to that same point, one of the things that we've been challenged by later on in the agenda, we're going to be talking about the Destination Iowa Grant. We're trying to run this dual process of getting the plaza design to a point where, you know, to apply for the Destination Iowa Project. And, and as such, you know, we're trying to get the key decisions and the key information for the council to make those decisions along the way. So there's been a lot of work that's gone into this, and we're hoping that we can kind of align those things as we move forward with decisions.
So I, I think Grant might have a question, or do you want to wait till they're, till he's finished, Grant?
Um, no, at the end would be fine. Thank you.
Okay, thanks.
Go ahead, Tom. Thank you. Yeah, so, so I just wanted to point out that, so there's a lot of conversations been going on around the depot. There's an, an ice cooling system, a chiller is what it's called, that's associated with the ice component tree. It's quite large. It needs to be placed in the park or in the depot in a certain, in, in a way that's that it's still vented. So there's a lot of conversations going on with regard to where that'll be located. I think we've got a pretty good concept of that, but honestly, we're, that hasn't been through the appropriate committees yet, so I'm, I'm not, I don't want to push that out to the council at this point, but I will say that one of the things that has been talked about at, at great length are the, are the conditions of the bathrooms, the need to have the mechanicals out of sight associated with the ice and the water features, and then also the idea of having some interior space for the public to gather within the depot, so that area would be redeveloped in a manner that you can rent it, it's climate controlled and has access. So working through a number of meetings, you can see the illustration here is showing the east end of the depot having, being enclosed. There'd be windows, a central atrium that could be open on both sides. So you could go from Sixth out to the park and vice versa, and then a centralized bathroom facilities on the west edge. And then the area to the, the further west, this would be like where the bathrooms are currently, would be where you would, where we would house the mechanicals. We'd have some storage of equipment. For the ice maintenance, there's a requirement that there is a Zamboni or a pull behind Zamboni that's associated with a tractor. So we're still working through those details to maintain the ice. It's been, there's been a great deal of learning about ice as we've had conversations with folks regarding the ice loop. Next slide. One thing that I don't think folks really understand is how tall that building is. When you go in and you can take a peek at it, it actually can have a second floor. And so at this point, there's a desire to put a mezzanine on the west half of that building, so there'd be a stair, stairwell from the interior area that's rentable, and then a small area on this, on a second floor that could be open to the public as well as the first floor, and then there would be room for some storage on that second floor. We have some limitations on that second floor for accessibility, some concerns. We can only have so much of that open unless we put in an elevator. So so anyway, that, that's kind of the, the committees have looked at this, and they are, they've kind of been pretty solid on this, this concept for the depot. That leads, and then I'll just show you a couple elevations, and these are, these are a little older, and they, they've been more refined, but they also include some of the conversations that we got to have before we can bring it all out to the public. But Rachel, I don't know if you get the next slide there, or who's running? Terrell's running. So you can see the difference between what the depot looks like when it's open air and then with some of the window structures, and then the next slide would be looking at it from Sixth Avenue. So changes the character of it a bit, but I think having that space closed off and usable year round, especially if we're going to have ice in the uptown, certainly is desirable. So, and I think that's the last slide, isn't it? Oh, the pretty picture. So this, this is the, the rendering that's been completed to really illustrate what that space is going to look like upon completion. They've been very good at being able to take the concepts and refine them and refine them. So as we move, if things are added or things are removed, these illustrations can be updated. I, for those that are on the steering committee, we did have an opportunity, they, they put this in a 3D model, and I think the council was invited to come in and see this whole thing. I think everybody was. And we had VR goggles, and so you could literally put on VR goggles and stand in the middle of the plaza and walk around and, and get a feel for the space, provided an opportunity to see elevations. It was a pretty, pretty dramatic exercise, and I think it really helps folks fully understand what, what that Plaza Project will look like ultimately in the end. So I don't know if there's any specific questions you have that I'd be happy, I think Grant had a question.
Great, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you. Tom, first off, thanks for the diagram of how the depot would be segmented for various uses. I, I, I found that interesting. I, the concept of that central atrium seems to be attractive, so, and also doing something a little bit more robust with the restroom situation. So, you know, I really only have perhaps one or two questions. And has there been any progress relative to determining the life cycle cost for the ice sheet? And that would include just not only the equipment and its maintenance, but also then the maintenance of the ice. You mentioned the, the Zamboni-like device. What progress has been made on that? Because that's going to be a real critical input for me. I think it's, it behooves us to ensure that we understand with clarity what we're getting ourselves into if we sign up for an ice rink downtown.
So, so the consultants have been providing us a lot of the, the information on base costs associated with the, the infrastructure, the underground. They're, they have not provided me with the life cycle cost of the chiller. But, and we've been working internally to understand the, the ongoing maintenance associated with the facilities. So I'll see if they make any, if they made any progress on that. But we do have quite a bit of information on what it's going to take to maintain the facilities. Matter of fact, we went through an exercise and asked RDG to provide us an estimated annual, annual cost to maintaining the area, and then we asked the Parks Director Seth for, for him to do his, his own analysis, and they came up with almost the exact same number. They were $10,000 off, but I think Seth was incorporating the concept that we, we may need a, a, an actual coordinator that would help with the programming. If you recall, the idea with the plaza is to be able to have a programmable space in the city that's open for over 250 days a year. So that obviously wasn't on the radar of RDG, but from a staffing perspective, I think we were between $30,000 and $40,000 a year. And I, that wasn't adding FTEs. That was merely identifying the cost to maintaining the facility. I, I don't, I don't think we, Seth, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but we weren't looking at adding any additional staff as it relates to maintenance and ongoing in the plaza.
Yeah, no, we were just looking at seasonal and part-time staff additionally.
So I guess, Tom, it's fair to say that the holistic life cycle cost determination is a work in progress, and we'll see that at a later date?
Yeah, yep, that is correct.
I, maybe one residual question, Your Honor. Any formative thoughts relative to the caboose? Where it goes, what it's, what its ultimate location will be?
So that, that, that is a part of the contract, and we really haven't got into that, that point at this, at this juncture.
But the relocation of the caboose is part of the contract?
Absolutely.
It's part of the overall cost of the, of the project.
The, where it goes, yes. Relocating it, if there are going to be an additional park, that would be outside of the realm, but yes.
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, thanks. Work in progress.
Okay, other questions? Okay, thanks, Tom. All right, the next item is Brooke Proudie, presentation regarding potential wayfinding kiosk.
Thank you, Your Honor. We have, you brought up Roger Brooks. I also want to talk about Roger Brooks. So in 2015, part of his recommendations laid out an extensive idea for wayfinding. One of those ideas was for a kiosk in uptown. We have a kiosk out at Prospect Meadows that advertises the uptown area and commercial core to the visitors of Prospect Meadows, but we would really love to have something more substantial in the uptown area. We have our offices, and we get lots of people coming in and asking about what there is to do in Marion at the Welcome Center. But this would be a lot of night and weekend traffic when our office isn't open, to be able to tell people about what's going on in our district and our community. So this is one example of a company called Cornerstone Kiosks that's very well-known in the Main Street community. They're a great company to work for or work with. We've talked to other Main Streets about it, and we got a quote from them. Their products range from $15,000 to $25,000, depending on what type and what amenities it has. Some of those panels are backlit. Some of them are just cork boards that anyone can post on, so it really is customizable to your community. Even the plaques are all customizable. Some communities want sponsorship opportunities because they are expensive. And then we, we're looking at where would we want to put this? We didn't have a site identified in any of the uptown planning. We were still trying to figure that out as we looked through the Plaza Design, but we have identified this spot in the North Plaza. It was originally planned to be a parking meter kiosk. So it has electrical. Engineering said this would be a great spot for this, if not permanently, then temporarily until parking is implemented in the district. And because there's electrical there, it would light the internally lit box for some of those panel sides. So that's an area we've identified as a good spot. We are, we'd be willing to partner on the cost share, and they leave it up to Leon and Finance to, to speak to how that would be funded, if there's any pockets of money for that, for wayfinding. But this is one that I know we've been really wanting for a long time. As Amber put in the memo, there is a plan for a wayfinding to be a more substantial project, to hire a company to research that in the coming years. However, that's probably going to be about two years out before any of that would be implemented.
You mean just overall way, wayfinding in uptown?
Overall wayfinding.
I know we've talked about that for years.
There's, the wayfinding project is in the CIP for FY23, so beginning July 20, July 1st, Amber and I had her check in yesterday. I know she's working on developing some RFQs that they would publish in order to get consultants, vendors to help start implementing that, the recommendations from that branding, which included the wayfinding, so.
So today, my question is, one, do you like the style? Do you like this model? Do you want more options? And two, do we want to wait until kind of we do this RFP for wayfinding and have a more comprehensive plan, or do we feel like this is more of a need that we want now, that the plaza is kind of in its final details?
So this isn't a, this is not a budgeted item currently, and what's an approximate cost?
They range from $15,000 to $25,000. The quote that I got from a preliminary estimate was around 22.
And if, if we implemented the full wayfinding plan, this, this wouldn't go away. It would be incorporated into that? It'd be part of it?
Yes.
I mean,
I'd assume so.
That wouldn't replace this?
Right.
Okay, I think those are all questions that are important, so go ahead.
Just a little bit more about the timing of the project and with, right, the RFQ that's going out, so we would get results of that in FY23?
That is the goal, yes.
Okay, and hold on. And I mean, this, this great, right? Makes a lot of sense. I'm in support of it. I wonder if, if we're going to get that information this next year, if we should, if we should wait to see what the information says, where we should put it before we would purchase it and, and put it up, right? I don't know enough about wayfinding, but if we would have something this next year that would help direct where we might put it, seems like waiting the year to do that would be something we might want to do.
So just to clarify, the location of it likely wouldn't move. We've already ran conduit and poured concrete. So we likely wouldn't move it. It'd be a matter of, is that the style that would come out of that, not necessarily where the location was. So that was a future pad that we put in, similar if you park downtown Cedar Rapids and have to pay the the kiosk, and so that was something that we put in there planning ahead, not knowing where the parking study was going to go, so that we don't tear up our brand new concrete to put that in the future.
But for the meantime, it can be capped.
Yeah, so it's not something that's pressing that needs to be addressed today, but it's an option that is out there, and so that's why Brooke is here talking about it.
Yeah, my, my question, Brooke, would be if we follow Colette's suggestion, would that consultant come up with some recommendation that might have a different design of the kiosk? In other words, the, the, the information that would be suggested or recommended to be on that kiosk and how it's different shapes, different, I'm sure there's different sizes, different shapes that you can put on it. I'm just asking the question, would that consultant in that survey or whatever that's going on impact how this kiosk may look like or what may be on it?
It could. It depends on how detailed that RFP is. You might just be asking for locations. You might be asking for recommendations of companies to work for, for, to purchase the signs. We did look into a couple of their options that are more digital in nature, but they don't do well below like zero, and they tend to break down in the cold weather. And so there weren't a lot of great options for that that were really financially feasible for.
Okay, so let me ask, my original question then also is going to be, what kind of information would be on this kiosk? I mean, what would we expect to see on it? What would a visitor expect to see on it? Are there materials to hand out, or is it just up items that are going to be behind glass that they can look at and then get information from? I mean, how, you're obviously going to show it, this one is shown four sides, so what kind of information, if you did it now, would you be putting on it?
Yes, we'd put the, likely the uptown map. We'd put trails information. They would probably be enclosed cases so that it, it wouldn't be as much of a public board, but you could have a public board on one side. We could implement boxes that have brochures in them that people can take. It's really customizable. The, the things we hand out most in our office are the uptown maps and our Lynn County Trails maps, so that, those two, I would definitely recommend putting on here.
Would it have also like maybe directions to other amenities in the community?
Yep, other amenities.
The Y.
And a, and an event listing, too.
So visitors naturally would be coming to this area, and then they could see what, what else there is around the community besides just up.
So what is the temperature issue again, you said?
The, the digital boards don't work well in below freezing temperatures.
Freezing meaning 32 or zero? How, how low are you going? Zero?
Zero is what I was reading. Zero is what I was reading.
Okay.
The and they are a lot more modern looking and we felt they didn't really fit into the character of the district. The thing with the RFP process, we would complete in twenty twenty three, hopefully, but wouldn't probably be implemented and with production timelines till twenty twenty four, which is where that two years timeframe came from.
Go ahead.
So I had a couple of questions. What what's the size of that? How tall is that?
It is fifty two by fifty two by ninety six.
Ninety six. Okay, so it's a good size.
They do have a smaller version that's thirty six by thirty six by eighty two. I think.
You had said that there were some other design options?
Color options. There's different plaque types that you can put on it. And then you can choose to do four short panels, four long panels, a combination of the of those.
The overall look of it is?
Overall, it doesn't change a whole lot. It's more the details. Yep.
And then just more for Ryan, I guess. The wayfinding that the city is looking to do. That's for the entire city, correct? Not just for the Uptown?
That's correct, yeah. And to the the conversations that or the questions from the council, we have discussed this with our partners at the Chamber in Uptown. We've pros and cons for each process. And so there wasn't a timing. You can make a case to do it earlier because we had pre stubbed it. Do you want to put the the final touches on the on the Plaza? We did talk through the timeline for the the wayfinding process that's in our CIP, just in terms of the timing. And so what's the appetite of the council? So we've kind of talked through pros and cons of of both.
Yeah, we didn't. We don't want to get too far down this road if we wanted to wait for the wayfinding. Or if there's different options out there that we wanted to look at. But while we're putting the final details on, we didn't want someone to walk through and be like, what's supposed to go here kind of things?
And what what, since it's not budgeted, what bucket would that come out of?
I think this is a really good candidate for Hotel Motel. And as she did state, we do have dollars set aside in local office and sales tax right now for community wide wayfinding. We don't have that project specified, so we could also pull from that budget.
Okay, go ahead. And then Steve, you had another one, just quickly.
Well, how long if if we decide to get one, how long does it take to get it?
Once all the details are chosen, it's about an eight week production turnaround.
So what are you looking for today? Consensus on whether to whether to put it on the agenda or?
Or consensus on if you would like us to proceed now, or if you'd like us to wait and wrap it up with the overall wayfinding?
We don't need an actual vote.
No, just direction. What we would do is if the direction, if the decision or the consensus was to proceed with it, direction's fine. We would go work with Uptown and and bring it back to the council with any sort of documents that need to be approved at a later.
I'm okay now. I I don't, I'm okay now. I don't think the the wayfinding project next year will tremendously impact or change what you're going to do with that. I I certainly have confidence that your group in your office in the chamber will know what to do with this.
Yeah, I think it's timely. I think it's needed. We've needed it for a long time. And if it's going to be, it would be part of the what we do in the in the couple of years anyway. And, you know, if we were able to do it now, why not?
I'd support doing it now, too.
Anybody else?
Your honor.
Randy, we'll go with Randy and then back to you, Grant.
Okay, thanks.
Sorry, I was just gonna say, I totally agree with that. I was just wondering. You know, it's a shame that we can't have something that would have like time and temperature on there. I know that you had mentioned that the marquees don't, but yet we still have a lot of restaurants that have marquees and those sub-temperature temperatures, but I don't know, that would be something that would be interesting, a time and temperature or something that would allow us to digitally display timely events that were coming up, maybe a current menu. I mean, I I just feel like this is a lot of money for a just a billboard, so to speak. But I don't know, maybe if there was some other options that we could see, that would be interesting. And then also, too, are there other features that can be added into that, like USB charging ports? So people could charge their phones or something like that. You said it does have electricity to that. I'd be curious to see if they would have some of those types of features. I'm kind of thinking of things that I would see like in an airport or a train. Just some of those amenities, I guess. I I'd like to try to see if we can maximize that, you know, to get the best thing for the buck out of that. That would be pretty impressive.
Yeah, we can definitely explore some of those options. And I want to clarify, when I was talking about the screens and not doing, well, they're more the touchscreen types that you would see in a mall. Those were, those were not, but we can look into time, temperatures, scrolling.
Just just something to look at. Thank you.
Okay. Grant?
Yeah, thank you. Brooke, first off, I think this would be a very attractive add to our emerging Plaza, so I I really applaud you looking at this. I I have just a detailed question that's troubling me a little bit is how is the content that is displayed managed and maintained and updated? What 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 kind of process would we have to go through if we want to update the content at the kiosk?
So similar to what we do at Prospect Meadows, Amber with the marketing department in our office, create the promotional materials and update those billboards.
Okay, all right. So it we it would be self-managed in a in in essence.
But yeah, between the two offices, we would split that.
Sure, okay, all right. Okay, I I generally support this. If there are some, I'll say quasi interactive options that also might be available, it'd be at least to understand those. But I think moving this forward perhaps faster will benefit as we begin to open up the the district as you are referring to it and really, I think it just will complete the launch of the entire area. So in general, I'm I'm in favor of moving a bit faster versus waiting for the entire project on wayfinding.
Is there anybody who is strongly opposed or has strong objections to? Okay.
I'll look at some more options. I know we'll seen the image on the left and thought it looked a little British, so I will. I will look for some less British. I think it's the pine cone on top that really makes it kind of British. Like a phone booth, right? Okay, well, I will come back from some more options and and see what we can come up with. Thank you.
All right, moving on with the consent agenda. No items are marked on pages two and three. Are there any specific items anyone would like to discuss? Oh, I'm sorry. Go ahead, Jason, your honor.
A six.
Yes.
With the union contract, I just want to brief counsel that that was pulled from a previous meeting for verbiage reason. And the union has ratified and signed this agreement. And there'll be a MOU associating that document.
Okay, any questions on that? All right, thank you. Any other items on pages two and three? Okay, on to page four. F one is marked for discussion. I'll turn over the gavel to the mayor for ten.
Thank you. Tom?
As as indicated in the on the agenda, the the city has received a request from Genesis Equities to amend the concept plan that was associated with the development agreement they entered into in July twenty twenty. In the packet, there is a detailed memo and then a copy of the letter of request. And then the original agreement was provided. If you recall, there were a number of concept plans that were illustrated as part of that original agreement. And they're wanting to pursue something that's a little bit different. So they've submitted this letter of request. I just wanted to highlight it for the city council, let you know that we're receiving and filing it. We're looking at it internally, but at this point, we're not, we're not proposing to make any recommendations on that. But if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Anyone?
Yes.
Yeah, just a comment. I know I mean, I did not look at the entire agreement, but one aspect that stands out to me. And this was also the same language was in a letter that we received from the realtor on the project is the definition or understanding of the highest and best use. Okay, that was part of the agreement. I think there's also some factor or dollar amount in there that there would be an unexpected amount of investment on this lot as well, because the the city's obviously making an investment from TIF. They're also getting the adjoining street. I mean, so the the city is has made a commitment and we're so we're expecting that commitment in return. Now, the one aspect of this is I see there's three parcels laid out here, lot A, B, and C. You've got two restaurants and a car wash. Now, the one that jumps out to me specifically is the car wash. Is that a highest and best use for that property? Will that be enough with the two restaurants to get to their dollar commitment? You know, and I'm not an expert on it. And we just have a new car wash on the east side of town. There's another one further down on on First Avenue. So we're seeing a number of car washes. So maybe that's their risk to decide whether that's the appropriate investment, but you know, the realtor made the question about the change in the landscape of what's happening out there. And I understand that aspect of it, but I would maybe suggest that there's another individual out there that can review this and say, help us out with highest and best use for what we're looking for for that project, for that corridor. If we could make use of somebody like that, I don't know who that is, but I would suggest maybe we get some impartial person other than everybody up here who is not experts on land use for this. So at least that would be my recommendation to consider.
That may, I I think that makes sense. I would equate it to when we're going to acquire property, we hire an appraiser to give us the value of that. So it seems to be a rational line of thought in my mind. Anyone else? Any questions for Tom? Okay.
Yeah, Will.
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Just, so, Tom, I I remember this, the original plan for this area's development. And I know it's gone through an evolution. I think it started off as three, maybe four mixed-use business kind of buildings. And now it's evolved, you know, to this current plan. And honestly, I've thought a little bit about that. And I I think our pandemic has probably eroded the interest in offices, given I think people want to have the flexibility to work virtually, if at all possible. So I I think I know that's might be part of that driving force. I agree with Steve. I think if we can have a sense of the highest and best use determination on this, you know, is this is this about as good as it's going to get for this property? Given what I've just said in terms of the interest of offices versus amenities like restaurants and service facilities like a car wash, I think that would be useful to ascertain as we move this forward.
Are you, Ryan? Did you have something to add?
I was just gonna ask if there is, if if that's direction. We've got two council members, so if as long as we have a consensus, we can certainly reach out and and secure those services.
Sounds like a good idea to get outside information on that.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Any questions on F two before I hand it back to the mayor? No? All right, I'll turn the meeting back to the mayor. Thank you. Okay, on to the regular agenda. Items A one and A two are not marked. Any questions on those? Yes, go ahead.
Mayor, sorry, just with A one. We this, I I think this one is an important one to flag as it relates to our equity efforts. This is just extending our contract with Tom Newkirk. He's been assisting us as we look at implementing the equity task force recommendations. We've got some work with the Civil Rights Commission that we're expecting to have him assist us with. We're also going through our personnel manual and establishing that, make sure we have that lens on that review. But also to help help build the training for our non-public safety staff, our police department, police personnel go through implicit bias training, de-escalation training. And we want to make sure that we're also establishing training curriculum for our non-public safety staff. So I I did, this is not flagged, but I do think it's important to highlight for our community, especially with all that's all the efforts that our our communities put in towards this important topic, so.
Yeah, I'm glad to see that this is taking place. You know, I think we we have, you know, we need, we need to implement the recommendations as this is in, this is the next step in that process, so. Yeah, this is great. Anyone else? Okay, A three.
Evening, your honor and city council. My name is Brian McKenzie. I'm the Assistant Finance Director. This is a resolution to approve the funding allocation to the Hotel Motel Grant Program. And this is for fiscal year twenty three, so then, so the upcoming fiscal year that starts in December week. So the, just to recap, we did revise the policy this past year, so that was on the agenda on the March seventeenth council meeting. And just a quick recap there, the main change was that we went from having two sections of allocations, our nonprofit organizations and our city government events and commissions. We went from that to our grant program open exclusively to nonprofits. So now the local government events, our parks and our associated partners, they are now allocated during the regular budget cycle. So this was the program. This is the new policy. So this grant program was exclusively open to nonprofits. We had a total of eight applications. And so the budget for for that program was a hundred and seventy five thousand dollars, which is more than than the nonprofit section has had in the past. So one other recap on the Hotel Motel Fund is that by state code, you are required to allocate fifty percent of that for promoting tourism, other convention business in the city, potentially buildings, but the city has, but the council has chosen in the past to allocate the majority, if not all, to promoting tourism. And so we have a committee that meets to review the grant applications. And that consists of four residents, two staff members, Randy Stern, our city council representative. Yeah, so next slide. So these are the proposed recommendations from the Hotel Motel Review Committee. So like I said, we had eight applications totaling requests of two hundred and eight thousand five hundred dollars. So we met on June first, and this is the recommendation from that committee. That's really all I have. So if you had any questions about the process or any questions about about the any of the organizations?
The Prospect Meadows portion, is that was that is that for a particular project that can identify use or is it just general?
For Prospect Meadows, generally, their their application is for their general use for their offering.
It's fine. I mean, everything they do is generating tourists. So I I'm just curious if it was for a specific project.
They did, they do not specify a specific project.
Any questions? Thanks for all your work and everyone else on the committee.
Thank you.
All right, next item is A4, which is marked for discussion.
Thank you, Your Honor. We'll go ahead and cover A4 and A5 together, and our partners from Boostlog Insurance are here, Katie and Melissa. I'll invite you up to present on these items.
Thank you for having us present regarding the property and casualty insurance renewal tonight. For those of you who don't know me, I'm Katie Lursman with Boostlog Insurance. I'm the owner of Boostlog Insurance since 2018. We are a family-owned agency that started with my grandfather in 1963. Melissa is our account manager here, who's worked very closely with the city and their insurance policy. Jim, my father, he's fishing in Canada currently, so is unable to join us, but. He's worked with the city for many, many years on their insurance policy and actually was. Helped introduce them to ICAP back in 2012. So we've insured the city through the ICAP program since July 2012. The city moved from Travelers to ICAP, which is a self-funded pool. As the city has grown, this has been a better option than both EMC and Travelers, who specialize in cities. As they provide more comprehensive coverage at a competitive cost. ICAP specializes in cities and counties in the state of Iowa. They currently insure nearly 800 of Iowa's public entities, and they were formed back in 1986. They provide a great option for cities the size of Marion, who are not large enough to self-insure. But are big enough that they no longer fit the appetite of companies like EMC and Travelers. Actually, in 2012, after we left Travelers, we went back to EMC to look at that option. And unfortunately, the city had gotten too big and they were not willing to give us a quote at that time. ICAP continues to provide very specific coverage and loss control for cities and counties. And annually adjusts our coverages as the needs of these entities change. They offer a number of training programs, risk management solutions, and specialized services that the city can and does utilize. My account manager, Melissa and I are both ICAP certified. And attend training sessions every year in order to keep up with policy and coverage changes. The pool shares in the claims and there is normally a member credit provided annually for the unused premiums based on the previous year's experience. This past year, we didn't see a member credit as the claim's experience has not been good. We strongly feel that ICAP, the ICAP policy is still the best fit for the city's insurance needs. The city's property and casualty insurance premium for fiscal year 2021 to 2022 was $321,526. And renewed at $389,799 for the 2022-2023 fiscal year. This is a much larger increase than we have normally seen and is driven by many factors. In the past five years, ICAP has paid out over $5 million in claims for the city of Marion, with a larger percentage of those being the derecho, about 2.5 million so far were derecho-related. Municipalities overall have had a large increase in claims. ICAP is seeing a 15% to 25% average increase in renewals this year so far with all of their cities and counties. The city of Marion was up 20% overall this year after we took into consideration endorsements over the previous year. The city of Marion has remained very steady in premium contributions on most lines of coverage. The line of coverage that is driving the largest cost increase is property damage, which includes damage from the derecho to buildings and vehicles, which you can see. Well, hopefully you can see, it's not hard to see that, but. ICAP provided us with that slide today. The marketing manager from ICAP put together the following charts showing premiums, loss ratios, and increases in the total insured value for autos and property from 2013 until today. If anyone else wants this chart, we do have some extra charts, so just let Melissa know. As you can see on this chart, the city's total insured property value has increased by 171%. And the auto fleet total insured value has increased by 39%. This slide also shows you the losses per line of business. And you can see that there is a direct correlation between increases in premium and loss ratio. According to the municipal insurance, not since the 1990s have public entities faced such a hard insurance market. Key factors impacting price include both social and economic inflation. Unprecedented settlements, settlement amounts, injury awards, excessive claim activity on both property and casualty lines. And increased costs of litigation, defense, and increased reinsurance costs. Throughout the nation, many public entities are facing these larger-than-normal increases, restrictive covenants, and diminished coverage limits. This makes state-level risk pools such as ICAP as important now as they have ever been. Because they continue to provide important and essential coverages to public entities. As we saw with the derecho, severe weather events have been on the rise in the United States. The country experienced 20 separate billion-dollar weather and climate disasters in 2021 alone. And 2022, the previous year. Many members, including the city of Marion, have experienced increased property damages as a result, which has in turn led to increased claim activity amongst members of the pool. We have also seen significant increases in discrimination-based claims and law enforcement claims. Litigation for such situations is not only more prevalent than before, but is also more costly. Sympathetic juries and increased media coverage have increased awards and costs associated with such claims. Cyber costs have multiplied due to increases in both the quantity and sophistication of the cyber attacks on public entities. ICAP was able to secure the cyber coverage again this year, but it came at a steep and necessary price for the pool. We fill out a renewal packet annually with the city to update any changes in exposure. We are normally aware of many of these changes in advance, but it helps with checks and balances to make sure that nothing gets missed. They also update building valuations based on inflation each renewal, which saw a larger increase this past year due to increases in building costs. We looked at higher deductibles and liability-only options on older vehicles this year, but there was a minimal savings. As the auto member contribution for this line of coverage was high enough that it didn't offset going with the $1,000 deductible, as there would be no savings. We recommend keeping the auto coverage as it is for now, but revisiting it as prices increase on carrying full coverage. We also look to higher deductibles on the property coverage and do recommend increasing the current property deductible from 500 to 2,500. The industry standard was 500 for many years, but as property rates have increased at a higher-than-normal rate. We looked at higher deductibles. If we go to a $2,500 property deductible, it would save $11,235 annually. We also looked into a $5,000 deductible, but the additional savings was only $1,888. We can continue. We can continue to look at self-insuring more of the city's smaller pieces of equipment, depending on the minimum. Premium per line of coverage. This should be revisited on an annual basis. Adding additional cyber coverage was also something that we looked at and presented earlier this year. But based on the high costs and continuing changes to this industry, there haven't been many cities who have purchased this in excess of the automatic coverage provided by ICAP. I feel that ICAP will continue to modify this coverage as time goes on and offer more options to its members. As the city grows, it is important to continue to revisit the insurance needs to make sure that we have adequate limits of viability. We do feel that the city is in line with other cities of Marion size, but continue to review and revisit this coverage annually. The work comp policy that ICAP provides is through a third-party administrator called Iowa Municipalities Workmen's Compensation Association. The city's work comp mod, as we call it, or claims experience, has been excellent. And they currently have a 0.65 mod, which means that they are getting a 35% credit off the standard rates. There are many different approaches to insurance. In the past, the city of Marion's administration wanted an approach that was very coverage-rich with lower deductibles and the ability to get paid on smaller claims. This approach provided very comprehensive coverage during the derecho and hailstorms in 2020. The insurance industry is changing, and with the rates increasing substantially, we believe it is time to look at higher deductibles and self-insuring in more areas. We feel that in order to keep the policy competitive in price and coverage, we need to revisit. And discuss an approach that makes the most sense for the city going forward. We look forward to our continued partnership with the city and hope we can work together to develop more strategic processes that make the most sense for the city. I appreciate your time today. Questions?
Thank you. Questions? Go ahead.
Yeah, just to, Katie, just to start out with, this is a very high-level question, and I know you referred to it earlier in your comments. You said, I think you made the comment that you felt ICAP is the best fit for the city of Marion.
I think they're the only option.
The only option.
I think they're the only option.
So did you look at, so when you make that statement, then do you ever look at other competitive bids? Or do you only look at ICAP?
I mean, we could submit it out for bid. I think we'll get denial letters from every carrier based off of the claims history. And based off of just the, I mean, you may get some offers. I think you would have to go to an excess market. And based off of the rates that you have currently, I mean, your rates are really competitive. Your property rate is 19 cents per hundred, so. I mean, that's lower than most people have on any commercial policy that we see, so. The rates are very competitive. Also, the auto physical damage rates are also very competitive, so. I think if you ever did, the other thing about leaving ICAP is you would take all of your liability claims with you. So any existing liability claims that are ongoing, those you would have to pay out of pocket going forward. And there is a fund that ICAP has set up, and I don't know the most recent amount, but I think it's around $330,000 to $350,000 that you would actually get to take with you, but. You never know what those claims would go for.
Okay, so we went through the derecho. Obviously, you find out how good your insurance is when you have claims.
Absolutely.
Right? That's when you find out if you have the proper coverage.
Absolutely.
That's when you find out how good your insurance company is, so. After going through the derecho and you being the carrier, being the broker. For the city going through this, in your opinion, how well did ICAP? And your brokerage firm perform because of that incident?
I thought ICAP did very well. I thought they addressed, I mean, they addressed every claim. We actually had nothing that wasn't covered or on that policy due to the derecho, nothing that we could not get coverage on.
So you're giving them an A+?
Yeah, I think so. I would say so.
Okay.
And they've been great to work with. They've been very responsive, and you know, Amal would be a good one to ask that too, because she worked directly with them, and I. I asked her in a meeting and she said that they were very good to work with, but we got very few complaints. I mean, that's the first thing that Melissa did at our office, was start adding on equipment for all the trees being removed and. You know, she started addressing all the city's needs for insurance right away.
Okay, thanks. Randy, go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. Katie, thank you for your presentations. I had just a couple of follow-up questions as well, too. If this were to go through the renewal process and modifications were made to the policy and they would be. Overages or shortages, are those premiums adjusted midterm or do they wait till the renewal of the next year? Can you just address that?
They would all be adjusted midterm except for autos that you add on, so the autos actually are only at the renewal.
Okay, thank you. My next question is, is I've checked with some other cities and. Some cities choose, now this goes, this goes a couple of different directions, and I can see this in a couple of different lights, but. No pun intended, because my question is traffic lights. Some cities choose not to cover their traffic lights. In our situation, that would have been affected by derecho. My understanding that those would have been reimbursed through FEMA. Some cities choose not to. What is your recommendation? We currently have our streetlights on there, and I think we might be in excess of $3 million in streetlights. When we take a look at the perils of loss on those, would you continue to recommend keeping those insured or not?
I mean, that's something that we could look at, you know, I mean, ICAP recommended that in our most recent meeting last year. That we keep them on the policy. Now, I don't know much about how FEMA works and how working with the city, so I'd have to look more into that situation to know if they would reimburse the whole amount. Or if there's, you know, percentages, or if there's certain, you know, qualifications that FEMA requires. I don't know much about that.
Sure, okay, and thank you, and I appreciate that. I didn't mean to catch you off-guard on that. I just wanted to hear your, a little bit of insight on that, because, you know, I know you work with other. Agents that rep city policies to this nature, so I was just kind of curious to that. There's several things that I've outlined in the policy. We've had some conversations with that. I've been talking to some internal. Staff on that and, you know, there's some things that we can do to make some minor changes. That was my question as to the. Midterm either refund or additional charges on that, so thank you.
I would agree with that. I think we do need to visit.
Thank you.
Grant, do you have anything?
No, sir, I don't.
Okay, anyone else?
I will just follow up then. Mayor, with my reviewing of the materials that I've looked at here. I would recommend that the city with some slight, quick adjustments that we've had some internal discussions about, I would be in favor of. Moving forward with the renewal on this with some, with some insight and some more continuance of working with this post-renewal. Just as a little insight, thank you.
So this will be on the agenda for a vote on Thursday, correct? Anyone else have anything else for Katie or for staff on this? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to page five. Items B1 and then D under Parks are not marked. Any questions or? Issues with those? Okay, moving on to engineering.
Yes, Your Honor. So out at our airport, we have a Quonset hut that has started to deteriorate and fall apart. We did go out for quotes one time prior and actually received no quotes. So this is the second time we've put it out for quotes. We did get three, the low coming in from a boat construction at $4,900. The one from Schrader was late at about $10,000, and BJ Brecky at $18,000 and change, so we are recommending that we. Award the contract to a boat construction to get that Quonset hut demoed.
Thank you. Any questions?
Yeah, Your Honor?
Yes, sir.
Yeah. Mike, how, how fast will a boat be able to mobilize and get that structure taken down and carted away?
I don't think it'll take long based on the structure, but until the contract's signed, I cannot discuss that with them.
Okay, thanks.
Any other questions? All right. I took the meeting over, by the way. Give it back to the mayor now. All right, E2 is not marked. Any questions on that? E3?
Yes, Your Honor. So E3 is a sidewalk improvement program out at Lau at the Arch Environmental Center. So what this is doing is actually removing the concrete sidewalk and then adding additional hardscapes on the north side of the building as well. So this is a partnership with the Parks Department. The engineer's estimate is $151,100. They would bid July 12th, have an August 22nd late start date. And have 35 working days to complete it with $300 per day on liquidated damages. So we are recommending approve the project calendar so we can get this out and see how the numbers come in.
Questions? Okay, so then we'll move on to community development. F1 is marked.
Yes, Your Honor. On Thursday, there'll be a public hearing on the proposed plan for the 2022 multi-family urban revitalization area. Just a little background, the state code provides the opportunity for the city to designate an area as an urban revitalization area. There are parameters upon which an area has to. I guess, be a, parameters upon the property are established whether it can or cannot be an urban revitalization area. Generally, it's associated with deterioration, or there's been a decline in the property or the property values associated in a specific area. Chapter 404 provides the city opportunity to develop an urban revitalization plan that therein. With, upon adoption, allows the city to enter into development agreements to provide tax abatement. So whenever we enter into, whenever we talk about a redevelopment of a site. And we talk about tax abatement, we need to ensure that the area is within an urban revitalization. Area or that we create that area to allow for that abatement to occur. I know we don't talk a lot about that, so I just thought I'd give just a quick briefing on that. As you'll recall, the city was approached for the redevelopment of the, what was formerly known as the Hames property on the corner of. Twixtown Road and Marion Boulevard. That project moved forward. If you recall, Hames was not there. It was a deteriorated site. I think there were some vacant buildings. And warehouses on the site at the time, so it certainly does fall into that category of a deteriorated property. We did receive a proposal to see that property redevelop and go multi-family building. The council has reviewed that project and moved forward. And they did apply for workforce housing tax shred. As such, the city also entered into an agreement to provide some tax abatement. So we're here today to move forward with that urban revitalization plan, which would allow us to enter into that. Or allow them to apply for the application to get the abatement that we were discussing to be in that project, so. Sorry to go through that, but I just think that's important, that we do that every now and again. We talk about urban revive. Kind of a lot, but we don't really talk about the legislation behind it, so if you do get an opportunity, you read through the legislation. So if you do get an opportunity, you read through the, uh, uh, legislation that's in your packet. That kind of walks you right down the, uh, the process, uh, that we have to follow to, uh, be able to provide those tax abatement, um, to property and development, developments. So any questions?
Questions?
Your Honor?
Yes, go ahead. Grant?
Yeah, thank you. Uh, Tom, uh, I just want to make sure I'm looking at the, uh, agenda memo. So that you, what you're, what this will really do is, uh, we'll, we'll tee this up for a public hearing. The memo says June ninth. I presume you really are referring to July ninth?
That, that's correct. Uh, the, uh, uh, we had a, uh, one of the notices was not published. So this is the same staff report that you seen at the, the last meeting. We just had to reset the public hearing, so, um.
Okay.
My apologies for that.
Yeah, okay, got it. Thanks.
You'll see that on the next item as well.
Other questions? Okay, so does that take us through F3?
That's correct.
Okay, so F4?
So, uh, there'll be another public hearing on Thursday related to the twenty twenty-one multi-residential, uh, urban revitalization area. This, this area was, uh, um, established for the Green Park project on the corner of, um, Tenth Ave and Thirty-first Street. Uh, I believe if you drive by now, you're seeing the project come out of the ground. Um, uh, in speaking with our, uh, attorneys, uh, they felt it necessary to amend that urban revitalization area due to the, uh, multi-residential tax, um, levy going away. And that was specifically referenced in the district, um, so in the district legislation. So we want to amend the legislation so that it reflects the, the way the taxes are actually generated on that site. So, uh, minor amendment, but we want to make sure that we're doing things, uh, appropriately. Doesn't affect anything that's going on or any kind of rebate that's getting, um, provided to the, or abatement that's being provided to the developer.
So it's just as a result of the change in classification at the state level of the multifamily?
That's correct.
Okay. Is that clear to everybody? Any questions? All right, so that takes us through F5. Um, F6?
Yes, Your Honor, hold on one second here. The next item is on Thursday, there'll be a public hearing regarding the request to amend the future land use map. The city of Marion, uh, to rezone property and then, uh, for a preliminary site development plan to be approved consistent with the rezoning and the comp plan amendment. There, the council has provided a pretty detailed packet of information. I will, uh, just let the council know that I've received an email and the developer has requested that Thursday, that the, uh, public hearing be, uh, continued, uh, to the next meeting. They have some representatives that they'd like to have, uh, available for that meeting that we're not able to make Thursday's meeting. Um, so that's, I just want to get that out there. I know they have representatives in the audience today, um, that are, are listening, uh, to the conversation and that they'll be there on Thursday, but I think they wanted to have others there, uh, in July. Um, so I was going to walk through, um, the packet and just, uh, provide a little information to the city council. Uh, as indicated, there's a proposed comprehensive plan amendment. Uh, the amendment is from single-family attached residential and public semi-public single-family residential to a single-family detached, right, residential designation. Uh, the illustration is, it's a little tough to see, but the dashed red area, uh, on the southeast corner of that, adjacent to the black line is the location of the property. This is, this, uh, illustration is taken from the city's comprehensive plan. And as you can see, the proposal, um, is, is adjacent to, um, uh, single-family attached and, or detached and, uh, fairly consistent with the comprehensive plan. Uh, the next, uh, request is related to the rezoning. Um, this area is directly adjacent to, uh, the neighborhood Indian Creek property. And I'm sure the council is very aware of that PUD that's in place that develops, really, really developed, uh, a guide for that entire area to be developed north of Thirty-Fifth Avenue and south of Tower Terrace Road. So this property, um, that's highlighted in red and the overhead is directly adjacent to the lighter turquoise color, um, where there is a very, very specific, uh, plan development that's being proposed, uh, or that is in place, actually. Um, so they actually own property to the west and, uh, will be submitting, uh, a proposal on that property. It's not before us this evening, um, but there are different guidelines that they'd have to provide for as that project moves forward. But tonight, as indicated here, there's a request to move, uh, to the planned unit development for the property that's highlighted in red. Uh, the project that's being proposed is, uh, eighty lot, single-family, uh, uh, development, narrow lot design. Thirty-two of the lots, uh, are less than fifty feet wide. Uh, primary access is on the Thirty-Fifth Avenue and Forty-fourth Street. Um, I'd just point out that generally in a single-family development, uh, you, we'd see a straight zoning request, which means it go to one of our, um, uh, just standard zoning classifications, which would be the, the S, the SR districts, uh, suburban residential districts. Um, the request and why it's coming to the city council, um, as a PUD is because they're seeking, uh, to go outside of the zoning reg, regulations and go lower than a sixty-foot lot. Um, and that is why they, uh, have chose to move to the PUD. So they could not develop, uh, consistent with this plat if it was just straight zone. Does that make sense? So as you can see, the layout, uh, north is to the left of the screen. Apologize, but the way the property lays, it's very difficult to put that on a north-south axis. You guys wouldn't be able to see it. Um, and you can see there's, there's multiple access points to the property. The red dots are highlighting those lots that are less than fifty feet. So we do have some fifty footers and then we have some that are actually less than a fifty foot. The developers proposing within the development that there are, um, essentially, um, four different, uh, housing units and then a multitude of, uh, facades that would be associated with those individuals. So, you know, eighty lots, they're going to have a number of different elevations, so, uh, and floor plans. Um, but because of the limitations, um, you know, there was a, a request to understand a little bit more. If you're going to have such a limited number, how is that going to develop out? So there, there have been some standards that have been applied to the PUD as a part of this, um, project, uh, including, uh, tying, uh, the re, the development of the project to their, uh, elevations. And they're within the ordinance. So when we adopt the PUD ordinance, the ordinance will actually spell out what they can do and where. And it'll all be consistent with these elevations. Um, there's another set here. Uh, and there's also, uh, a palette of materials that, that would be, I'm sorry, Rachel, I'm looking at my slides and clicking and not asking you to click. So my apologies. So you can see the elevations and materials that are identified would be, any development had to be consistent with those that are identified on the slides. And these would be tied directly to ordinance. So someone come in, want to build a house. We would review each site plan to ensure that they're being held, um, uh, to this elevation. When we do a planned unit development, it's been a while, I think, since we've done one. We do a preliminary site development plan, which really lays out how each, uh, property will develop. In the instance of a fifty-foot lot, there are some, uh, constraints. Um, and, uh, as you can see, um, they're going to a five-foot setback. Um, and as such, there'll be some building requirements that they have to place. Fire code issues will require that they, um, provide fire protection walls on each side of the building. If they're within ten feet, so the eaves will have to be fire protected. And again, this is illustrating a, a typical site plan on a, on a, see, this is a fifty-foot lot and a forty-five-foot lot side by side. Next slide. And I think I walked through, uh, the bulk regulations. I would like to point out, uh, that, uh, as, as we've looked at areas similar to this, uh, we've, we've wanted to ensure that the, uh, a collector's street, um, would have good visual clearance and, uh, that there would be, uh, some cohesiveness to the design of the neighborhoods. If you recall, on Twenty-Ninth Avenue, we did some fencing and landscape buffering. We've done a similar, uh, approach here and within the ordinance requiring that, uh, there, that, uh, there's landscaping and screening requirements. There's trees, uh, placed, uh, in the right of way of Forty-fourth as it's developed out, uh, forty-foot spacing. And then one, uh, tree per lot in the front yard as well as one street tree, uh, in the interior. And then, uh, um, within the ordinance, there wouldn't be provided a solid fence along Forty-fourth Street. What we've tried to accomplish is we see the community develop is to get away from where, uh, Thirty-first Street is a good example. And so is Twenty-Ninth. When you drive down the street, you see, uh, white fence, a tan fence, a wood fence, a black fence. So, you know, it's, it just doesn't look very cohesive. So on Collector Street, we've, we've tried to do that in a number of different areas. So that's worked into the ordinance. Next slide. So, um, the developers have submitted their request to the city. The city did a review. The planning commission took a peek at the project last month. As you can see, uh, above the, it's showing a five-oh approval on the land use amendment, which is true. The rezoning request was actually three-two and as was the, uh, preliminary site development plan. So there was a lot of conversation at the planning commission meeting. Some of the concerns were related to, uh, traffic issues, uh, generated by the property, uh, and, and the density. And then also some parking concerns were identified. Uh, it was also noted and the water department made a comment that, uh, this area is not, uh, it has water service, but, and it does meet any standards, but on a two-story home, there would be some, uh, there may be some, some issues with that water service so that, uh, a pump station on individual, uh, pressure stations may be required or one provided for by the developer, um, as this property develops. So just pointing those two concerns out, um, that were identified by the planning commission. Um, next slide. So really the, uh, after the public hearing, there'll be three, uh, resolutions on the agenda. Obviously, this will go to the next meeting, uh, if the council chooses to continue the public hearing to the July meeting. But the council would be in a position to approve the request, deny the request. They could table the request even after the public hearing, um, in July. You could table the request or, or keep the public hearing open, uh, continue it from there. Um, or you could refer back to P and Z if there are questions, comments or concerns that weren't addressed that you'd like to see, uh, addressed within the ordinance.
Is that it, Tom?
I just, uh, also just like to note that, uh, we did send notices out, um, relative to the project. Uh, I like to highlight this. Um, and, and so if we get a, a number of folks here on, on Thursday for the public hearing, just so you know, we did send out notices to a hundred and twenty property owners. You can see the area is highlighted in red on the overhead that identifies the, um, the property. And then we notified all the property owners, um, in the blue. So we, we went out a considerable, uh, distance to ensure that appropriate notice was provided. If there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer.
Okay, go ahead.
Thank you, Tom. I still, when we see these types of deals where we're, we're pressing these homes in there, five foot, five-foot setbacks on the sides on these. Um, I, I just can't help but think that we just keep shaving two feet off of each lot to get another house in there. When we take a look at those rendition drawings, it shows trees in between these houses. There's, there's no way that there would be trees in between these houses. There's only twenty feet from the deck to the rear lot line. I just still have a lot of, you know, I, I think of these areas and, you know, Cicero, uh, suburbs of Chicago, where we just literally build these houses. You can't even get a sidewalk in between, you know, each property line. Is, is there no concern to that, um, in these, in these processes to this? What, can you educate me as to why we would, we would be in favor of building them so condensed together? I mean, there are zero lot lines with five feet in between each property, ten feet.
I mean, it's, it's, as, as we review developments, you know, we make, we, we identify the concerns and, and, uh, a way to address the code, because we do have a sixty-foot minimum is to, to request a PUD ordinance. And that's what they've, they've done in this instance. They've, um, provided, um, the information to move it forward. So really, this is one of those situations where it's up, up to the count, the planning commission, the city council on how they'd like to see the area develop and proceed.
Sure, okay, thank you. I just wanted to express my concerns on those particular deals there. Because, you know, from an insurance standpoint, obviously, we'd have those firewalls, but I'm also looking to as far as what resale values look like. Uh, you know, wha, what's the market? Who's the market for these individuals that are, you know, purchasing these? Um, there's just a lot goes into that, so I'll, I'll, um, be done with my question on some of these tight property lines, but thank you.
What was the vote at, uh, P and Z?
Uh, so the Planning and Zoning Commission approved the comprehensive plan amendment. Uh, and then it was a three-two split vote.
Three-two.
But it was, but it was approved, recommending approval to move it forward.
How many members on?
There's, there's nine members.
Nine members.
And there was only five present at that meeting.
Okay. Steve, go ahead.
Yeah, I mean, I, I've, I've looked at this quite a bit, uh, from a number of different perspectives. Uh, first of all, we are doing a housing study. One of the thoughts that comes to my mind is, one of the benefits, or one of the reasons we would even want to consider smaller lots is if this is going to provide more affordable housing. I can't tell from this that that provides us with that or not. What I would like this, this applicant to do is to provide the information on what the selling price of these homes would be so that we can take that into consideration. So, uh, they're asking for a lot of exceptions here. Not only the lot size, the width, the setbacks, the site setback, the back setback. So there's a lot of exceptions that they're asking us to make. And we've done some exceptions in the past, but not of this magnitude. We did one two years ago for, you and I just talked about earlier today. That was twenty-seven lots, but the lots were all bigger than this. The other comment I will make is, you made the note up there that thirty-two percent of these are less than fifty feet wide. I'll make the other comment, there are only fifteen lots over fifty feet wide. Okay, so we're really talking, everything in this section is forty-four to fifty-foot wide. Uh, to me, that is, is extremely dense. It impacts all the things you're talking about in there from traffic, from water supply. And if there's problems in the future for water supply and those two-story houses are having problems, you know, they're going to be calling the city and saying, hey, the city has a problem. You're not providing enough water pressure to my neighborhood, to my house. You know, that becomes a city issue. Uh, so we have those issues. We, you know, the traffic, the putting out there, everything on Thirty-Fifth Avenue, east of that is a gravel road. That's not going to change for a number of years, since that's all rural. So that means all that traffic's going to go west on Thirty-Fifth or come down Forty-fourth and jump on the Twenty-ninth and then spread out. So we got those aspects. So, and then you got the parking. I mean, these, everything is just, the streets is can be all driveways. You're going to be able to park one car in front of one of these houses and that's probably about it. So the density to me gives me a number of bells going off in my head. But the only reason I could come up with why I would even consider this is if we think there's a real reason that this is going to provide affordable housing in this community. Uh, to me, this is a lot of lots of this size. I could bear a smaller percentage of it, but eighty lots all in this size, I think, are going to be, uh, pretty difficult, uh, to, to overcome. So those are my general comments.
He asked my questions. I'm good.
Oh, okay. Grant, do you have anything?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Um, what was the, the fire department's opinion of this?
In, in the re, in the review, there, the fire department is included in the internal review, um, just like every department. I don't know, Jason, if you want to provide any insight, but, um, uh, it met, it beats the standards, uh, even with the building code conversation. You know, it, it is outside of what we normally see. We don't normally see fire protection between two homes because of that kind of a setback. It happens on occasion, so. It happens on occasion. So as long as they're meeting and 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 not dropping below any of the fire code requirements. You know, it 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 wouldn't be here if it didn't meet the minimum standards. I will I will note that there was an additional access point. Required as a part of this to to meet the fire code. That's the access point on the 35th Avenue up to southeast side of it.
And so there wasn't any concern about. The geometry and dimensions of of the streets. And the radius of the turns or anything for emergency response. I guess. I'm certainly thinking aligned with what Steve's comments were. I'm just trying to think about, okay. Are we creating any kind of access issues, especially in the winter with this density of of housing? And really try to understand any unintended consequences that might be. Caused by this this style of development. I I guess there really wasn't a question. There was kind of a goofed up statement.
Yeah, and and I guess what what I would say is if the if the platter, the design. Didn't meet our standard code, you you wouldn't see it. We wouldn't. We wouldn't move it forward. It has to meet the minimums. Like I said, I think the original request. And it's been a while, but there was not access from the south to that loop drive along the south and we required that be put in place. Through the process.
Yeah, Tom, one more quick clarification. Are we correct in assuming that obviously the streets will be the normal width? And that parking will only be allowed on one side of. The street.
That's correct.
All the way through this entire subdivision.
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, thanks.
The concern that the planning commission had was that because of the narrow with lots and the size of the driveway, that if you have. Driveways, let's say you have two driveways and then. Ones on the north, ones on the south, there's going to be very limited on street parking associated with that. Then that concern was raised.
Go ahead, Randy.
Thank you. And I'm sorry you don't have the internet open for me to dive into my packet, but what was the average square footage? Of the house, you know, council member Jensen brought up a good point and. You know, per ten feet of lot is not going to shave off enough on the market value of these homes. I'm thinking for reconstruction cost on these. If we're looking at a. Two thousand twenty, three hundred square foot home. I mean, it's. Market value is going to be right up there. I cannot see. I would I would hesitate. To understand somebody come in and say, these are going to be a hundred and eighty five thousand dollar houses and we're going to make a decision on somebody's comment.
Yeah, I I think I think those are all good questions, but I think related to the market in the house, I think I think that'd be a really good question for the developers. I don't feel like I.
Sure.
Way in too much.
No, and I appreciate that. I just. I still stand on the same comment of, you know, the lots being just a little bit narrow where it's not going to not going to deviate off of a. Fair market value home in any category because. You know, you look at these houses, sixteen feet of them is in a two car garage. So, you know. Almost half of your lot is is the driveway. So anyway, thank you.
So just just explain what is it on the what's going to be on the agenda on Thursday? It's all this is going to be on the agenda, but we're continuing the we're opening the public hearing, but can.
I think I'll have to. Since that the letter just came in to continue the the public hearing. So my guess is we would remove the legislation and have the public hearing.
Just continue it.
And discontinue it. If that's satisfactory to the council.
Well, and the only thing I would add to the other comments is, you know, with there being, it seems like there's enough concerns and only. Five people on P and Z considered it. And it was a close vote. I just wonder if it wouldn't. Be wise to have them look at it again with a full. Commission.
Your honor, I would support that.
Do you have something else? Somebody said they have something else. Sorry.
Just a clarification question. So we alerted folks of the public hearing already and we said that public hearing would happen this Thursday. Is that accurate?
Yeah.
So we would have it this Thursday and just keep it open for the next meeting, right?
That's that's an option of the council.
Okay.
You you could hold it, close it, amend it back. I think Ryan was speaking with legal counsel, which is probably a better person to answer than me.
What 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 Tom had just articulated is that the council. Councilwoman Atkins, the the notice was that the the public hearing is established and published for Thursday. So legally, you have to open it. The council can. It's at the discretion of the council if you want to. Grant the request to keep it open. You can certainly. You can open it and close it and take legislative action on those matters if there is a desire to refer back to planning and zoning and. That's something that you could do. You could take other action at that meeting. Or you can grant a request to keep it open and continue it to the next meeting and then listen to the petitioner and then make your decisions at that point.
It seems like, I mean, if we've if we've shared with folks that they can come on Thursday to provide voice, we certainly want to do that, right? If we keep it open or we refer it back to P and Z, which makes good sense. I would support that as well. But I do think we want to make sure that we've got the opportunity since we alerted those folks that that opportunity would exist on Thursday.
Yeah, I think we're required to hold the public hearing.
Okay.
Yeah.
Anyone else? Grant, do you have anything else?
No, I I guess. Just for my own clarity. So we'll have. A hearing activity this Thursday, but can we still send it back to P and Z?
Yes.
City, the city attorney said yes.
That's one of the options the council could take on that on Thursday.
Okay, I I really think that. We need five more than five members out of P and Z to take a look at this. As a recommendation, so.
Okay, anything else? Anything else from staff, Tom? Oh, you have something?
I just have a question. So if if. If council is not. Or wants to see some changes to this, we wouldn't request that. During the meeting, we would want to send it back to P and Z for them to request changes or can we request changes and table something? How would that work if if so, it's either yes or no from us, correct? They're going to get shot down or they're going to get approved. Or we could send it back to P and Z with some changes.
You you can you can articulate if there are concerns, you can articulate your concerns back to P and Z and say, we'd like you to look at. Explore this a little further. Since there was only five members there, we'd like you, we'd like the rest of the council or the planning and zoning commission to take particular focus in on this and enumerate. Those items that you'd like them to focus in on and provide some general direction.
But is it R? Okay, thank you.
If I can, just from a the the difference is it is a PUD. So as Tom articulated. This is the PUD is meant to plan unit development is meant as a zoning tool, land use tool. To allow a developer flexibility to use ground in a different, more creative way. That's what allows them to offer proposals that are. Outside of what the zoning regulations specify. And so normally there is a. We're asking for relief here in order for this this area over here, which is going to add to the benefit of the community. So the the PUD is a different process. Now, as Tom mentioned earlier. If a developer comes in, they meet the standards, they're entitled to the process. So we've got a, we can't prevent anybody from going through the process. The with the PUD, though, it's not as black and white, given that it is, it's more legislative than than quasi judicial is. Is kind of how we would phrase it. If it was a straight up zoning request, you'd look at the setbacks, you look at. And how big the lots are, do they meet it? If so, if it was a straight rezoning request and variations, then it's a little bit more cut and dry. But because it's a PUD. That's where it becomes a little bit more. I won't say ambiguous, but it's just there's. It's not a, it's not a black and white as you would normally see with with zoning.
Yeah, your comment is that we're making all of these exceptions and there should be then a benefit to the community under this PUD designation. But as I looked at what is in this proposed development. The only idea I can come up with that is a benefit to the community is some lower priced housing. I mean, I agree with Randy, is that ever going to happen or will it happen? I don't know. I can't not tell. I mean, you cut the lots in half compared to what they normally are. You're saving twenty or twenty five thousand dollars. A lot, you know, maybe. But if the houses are. In a price range that our housing study would say we need more in that range, that might be a community benefit. Other than that, I see, I do not see any community benefit. Out of this proposal, other than possibly that, so.
Anything else? Okay. F ten.
Just need a breather for a second.
He's trying to compete with Barcalo. I don't know.
What's that?
Trying to compete with Barcalo for.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, Mike's been quiet today.
He was very quiet. Just give me a second to get my. bearings here. Alright, so. Kind of in keeping with and following along with the central corridor or the central plaza conversation earlier. The council's been aware and the cities enter into agreements to. Get assistance with the preparing an application to the Destination Iowa Grant Program. What I'd like to do today is just I'm going to walk through quickly. Kind of the grant process and talk a little bit about. How we get from where we want our project funded into the funding stream and then what the actual project will is is proposed to be. So. I'm going to walk you through the application and then. Show some high level photos and talk about the budget for the overall project. So. Next slide. So the Destination Iowa Grant was a hundred billion dollar grant program that was. Put out by the state. The the sole purpose that was to create assist with funding new quality of life and expanded tourism opportunities throughout Iowa. There were three segments or three categories that you could apply to. And they're identified on the screen. Next slide. We're working towards and pursuing the outdoor recreation fund. That fund was an encouraged development for outdoor activities as it states applicants will be required to demonstrate how the project will draw from outside of the local. From outside the local community and or outside of the state. So ideally, we want to try to create a regional and out of state attraction to the community. The application process is is. Benefited by a forty percent. Return or forty percent incentive by the state. So the city is going to be. Providing sixty, so it'd be a sixty forty split between the city and the state or however that gets. Put together. So in our instance, we do have some opportunities where where we have some grants that we'll be able to use as part of that sixty percent match. Not always happens that it doesn't always happen that way. And in this case, they are allowing for some federal funds to match those funds, which is nice in this instance. I would point out, and I think it's it's been stressed within that grant program that they really want to make sure that. The the application and the projects associated with it do. Do reach beyond the ADA minimum requirements. So they're really trying to make sure that the projects that are being proposed are. Accessible to all folks. And so as we look at our project, it. I can talk about this a little bit later, but it's it. If you think about what we have out there now or what we had on the 11th Street with the steps. And the curbs and what we've done on the streetscape, we really feel like we've really went. All out on providing that ability, the ADA accessibility of the project. And I'll talk a little bit about that in a second. Next slide. So we. So really, in an application procedure, there's there's just different categories and I'm going to run through these rather quickly, but we need to provide product. Project information, eligibility, project costs and financing, and then a project planning and timeline. I will point out that this, these are just some images from, you know, the pedestrian bridge, which is a part of the Seamar Trail. You know, that's while this isn't the specific area of that that trail that we're highlighting. You have to go over this bridge to to go through that connector. So it is a nice element of the of the trail and then obviously the. The North Plaza is highlighted in that picture below. I think it's important to note that. Grant programs like this don't come along very often and. We are, we are sitting in a really good position, I feel. We've, we've started down. The the road of developing. The the plaza plan over many, many years and we are at the position or in the position where we're getting right to the point where in three or four months, we could have construction drawn. This program is 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 geared to those types of projects because they want to get these things out of the ground. That's why the funding is being provided. And really try to kickstart tourism and such after COVID and and, you know, just the pandemic and everything else we've been through. So that's the reason why. So I think it's just important to note that. If you think about a project timeline. And what I showed earlier tonight on where we are, we're really sitting. Really in a good position, I think. Next slide. So another piece to the grand is going to be an economic impact and leverage. So we're going to take a peek at the project and we'll have to quantify. What we feel in the market, we're providing expanded plaza. Opportunities and and what we're going to draw to the community, both from a trail perspective and plaza perspective. And then ongoing operations and maintenance is costs. And we've been working with engineering and. And parks and then also our regional partners to understand a little bit more about the maintenance responsibilities of the trail. And then there's a number of reported required attachments that we'll be preparing. Next slide. Who is involved? This is one of those efforts that we can do without the support of our partners, Medco and and Uptown. And and the chamber have all been very supportive. I think we all have a copy or a portion of a copy. Or a draft of some portion of this grant that we're still preparing. And working to get accomplished by Friday, so. Diligently working. We're also, as the councils know, we contracted with WSP to do some of the trail work. B thirty two engineers doing the some of the central corridor work as well as the ICE. That's the folks that we're working with on the ICE Loop and then RDG Planning and Design. At some point, I believe it was a couple of meetings ago. Counselperson Atkins had asked, well, how are these going to be rated? And, you know, first off, there's we have to be eligible. And as you can see, there's some criteria for eligibility. We feel we are eligible. But I think the evaluation is the the point upon which what what the what was being considered. Next slide. And so there's points awarded. Ability to attract tourists, project financing. Feasibility. And as you can see, does the project have a plan to operate successfully once constructed? So that's where we're getting the maintenance conversations. Economic impact. So those are, you know, key indicators of of what we're doing and how these projects are going to impact us economically. You know, strategic planning to include handicap accessibility, as I noted earlier, and then. Tourism and attraction is also a consideration. And so there's a point system weighted and to. Do each of those items and there's a scoring committee and it has to get over seventy to receive grant funding. And then if it does get over that, they. And then if it does get over that, they feel there's still questions, they can send it back and ask for more information, so. We're very cognizant of these as we prepare the grant application. So what is the application? So the city is looking at constructing the Central Plaza Project in combination with the last one point three miles of the Seamar Trail. It's a little difficult to see, but you can see where it says Seamar Trail. That yellow portion of the trail that essentially extends from Menard South to the Cedar Rapids line is the last mile of the Seamar Trail to be connected that would, or the Seamar Trail that would connect Uptown Marion to downtown Cedar Rapids. This connection and the, and the construction of our Plaza would be a huge regional draw to not only Marion, but Cedar Rapids and the region as a whole. You know, you think, think statewide, the draw that the High Trestle Bridge has between Ankeny and Madrid. These, these trail segments and the connections of them to destinations really create quite a draw and and activity. So the one, the first component is the trail component. The second, obviously, is our Central Plaza, including our renovated depot, the ICE Loop. The play structure, the streams. You can see that this is a shot, it wasn't included in the, when we talked earlier, but you can see how the, there's a play fountain that's being proposed there. A great deal of amenities are being proposed. And I think I noted earlier that the idea is that we could program the space for over two hundred and fifty days a year. And that was directly out of the Roger Brooks Study. I don't think we've talked about Roger Brooks in like two years, but I think we've mentioned him three times tonight, so. Ironically, when we, we did get a visit from the state, it was a great opportunity to highlight our project. We walked around, they're very impressed with what we have uptown now. Spoke, you know, very highly of what we, what we're proposing. And I, I think they even indicated that, you know, the, we started talking about Roger Brooks and that plan. And I don't know how many people, I'm trying to think back of who all was engaged in in that plan. And it was a pretty robust process that we went through. And I don't think many communities go through a process that that we did and we've certainly, it's been a great benefit to us, so. Anyway, I digress a little bit, but the, so the plan is to include both the trail and the Plaza Project, next slide there. The key that I think the council is really wanting to understand is the budget. And we're, right now, we're sitting about eight point seven million dollar total project cost, but that does include one point two million of grants. And we're looking at seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars of in-kind match, so we're looking for, or in-kind donations. So we're looking at fundraising opportunities to raise some funds locally. And then public funding of about three point four and then a grant request of three point four. So the as we prepare the the grant, we're really looking at it. If you, if you think about it, the states actually were requesting a match of what we're putting in, so. And that is something that we've planned for, it's speaking with the finance director. You know, this is something that's in the C I P. I think we were actually proposing or we'd planned for more funding as a part of this overall project. The original estimate was five point four million for just the Plaza. We've included some other things in here, including the public art as a part of this project as well. And then, of course.
And the trail.
The, the trail piece is a, is a little over two million dollar part of this, so. So that's the proposed grant application we'll be moving forward with.
Go ahead. Thank you, Mayor, just something Tom mentioned earlier, which is we've got this project that the community has been, the community has been planning for quite a few years, that's going through the effort. This Destination Iowa Grant opportunity came up. And what we're trying to do is marry these two processes together without getting out in front of the community. The downside is if we, if we don't put our best foot forward now. The opportunity to capitalize on and compete for the max funding is lost. So I know one of the issues has been with the council. We need to explore this, we need to understand the Plaza Project, specifically the ICE Loop. So we are cognizant to that. This does not, applying for it does not bind the council and doesn't commit it to it. If we're successful, that's great and that certainly brings down the overall cost of the project by three point, whatever, three point two, three point four million dollars. Which is, which is a significant dollar amount. But we just want to, we want to we are doing our best to try to bring these two processes along together. And make sure that we are putting our best foot forward so we can try to maximize our competitiveness in this grant. For those watching at home or those that will watch it later. As, as Tom mentioned, I think it's worth repeating, the eight point seven million dollars of total project cost is not just the Plaza Project, but other things that is tied to the trail. There are other things in there that we're trying to capitalize on as part of the private investment to come up with the required match. So there are things that are, that's taking place there that is also factoring into that cost. So I just want to make sure that folks that are seeing this are not saying, holy cow, this, this project has now gone up to eight point seven million, because that's not the case. We're, we're trying to maximize what we're, what we're competing for and really try to tie the Plaza with the trail project together.
I'm happy to see that the public art is included in there as part of the budget, as part of the, the grant application. Often that component is always sometimes seen as, you know, fluff or, you know, we'll, we'll figure that out or something like that and it never gets figured out. But in this case, it's such a central part of what we're doing with this Plaza and it's such an integral part of the Plaza to make it an attractive destination. I'm really, I'm really glad that we're including that as part of the, the grant application as part of the budget, so.
Mayor, if I can add one more thing. This, this project, there, the Destination Iowa Grant, in some respects, helped speed up a lot of our work that we were doing. The, the question that Councilman Harper had earlier in the meeting about the costs. We are, we've been able to get some of the high level costs quicker because R D G has been helping us put this together. We've got some concepts that we're going to have to continue to run through the Technical and Steering Committee, but it, it helped to speed up that process in, in some respects and allowed us to get to some of these critical aspects quicker. There's still a lot more work to be done to make sure that we, we stay on schedule as that, as Tom showed earlier in the meeting. But again, it's trying to marry these two opportunities, you know, marry the, marry the process that we're going through with the Plaza Project along with this grant application, so we don't miss out.
Yeah, it aligns, it's like, you know, the stars are aligned, that this, this funding source happened to come up as we are getting ready to figure out how to fund this Plaza that we've been working on for so long. And so it's, it's really good timing. It's a lot, three point four million dollars is a lot of money. I don't think there's a day that goes by that I don't have any, someone say to me, I can't believe what what's happened in Uptown Marion. And they're looking at the streetscape, they're looking at the North Plaza. I can't imagine what they would say when they see the South Plaza completed and that, I mean, what that is going to do for just, it's going to just really drive the trajectory of this, of this uptown and the city in general. And just make it, make it a great destination, I think, and a place where everybody wants to be. So, but that's just my, my comments, go ahead.
I'm going to say thank you, Tom, Tom, for this portion of the deal. I sit on the C M P O Committee and, you know, they're, they're actively working on that side of the house as well, too, as far as bringing in the state and, and federal dollars. So it's really good to see. I just want to share with everybody, those who don't ride a bicycle that use our trails or if you do use our trails and you use a different mode of transportation. This last Sunday, I rode, we rode, my wife and I rode down to Newbo. And the route that we take, we take our old railroad line over to C Avenue. We cross Blair's Ferry, we travel across Rockwell Collins's parking lot. We get back on Fifty First Street, we go past Tyson's to pick up the trailhead over by Interstate three eighty. So those of you that may find this shocking, this body did ride twenty miles on Sunday. What my point is, is you get a total different perspective when you're riding these streets and these trails. Down in the Newbo, I bet you there was over three hundred bicyclists down there. And I heard a lot of people shit chatting about they cannot wait for our trails to open up because us citizens here, we're looking for a destination, right? Those citizens are looking for their destination, right? And it's a little bit difficult for them to get into our community. So when we get that, when we get that portion connected. We will see a total different community in here on a Saturday and Sunday. I mean, it was, it was bumper to bumper bicycles down there, there was entertainment going on and I just cannot, I, like the mayor said. It just will be so exciting. And though I am not Paul Draper, the barricades were not up and I did go over the pedestrian bridge over Seventh Avenue. It is amazing to ride your bicycle across that, so can't wait for those, those finishing light fixtures to go on to it, so. But anyway, I just encourage people to think outside of the box when you do do those rides or those, or those bicycle deals. It's, it's incredible to be able to move around within the city. It's like, some people have talked about in the past, taking a, taking a kayak down through the community, through our creeks. It's a whole different perspective to see things from that different level, so super exciting about our trails. And I, I just, this is a major milestone for our community. Thanks for your work on that and everyone, thanks.
Anyone else, any questions?
Tommy had something else. I, I just want to let the council know that these numbers, I'm, I'm asking for a clarify clarity on the numbers as well as we said. So I want to make sure that we're accounting for any kind of increases. So on Thursday, I'll provide any updates that may, because I know there was some potential cost increases over the original estimate. So I just want you to know that we're we're working to the, to the last minute here to get this thing done correctly, so.
Grant, do you have something?
Yes, I do, thank you, Your Honor. Tom, can you back up to the slide that has the scoring criteria or scoring categories? Oh, there you are. So this is, I, I think, really a recommendation and I don't even know if it when you ask this, that it'll be granted. But if they have a committee or a group that is evaluating all of the projects that are submitted for this funding. It would appear to me that they already have a structure of the scoring criteria, the scoring rubric that they're going to use to assign score points. And it would be if you can get that scoring rubric for each of these six categories, that may help tailor in the final form any last minute editing that gets done. What, what's the submittal date for this?
Councilman, I'm going to answer for Tom because there's a couple of points that I, I think are important to share. The, so the action that you're going to have on Thursday would be to adopt a resolution that supports and officially officially endorses the application. The tour that Tom had referenced earlier, we had somebody from the state come and tour and we showed off all the, the different aspects of the, of this plan. And that individual shared some critical feedback for us that we are incorporating into the application. So that's the next best thing as a rubric. The advice that we were told is get this in as soon as possible. So the goal is to get it in by Friday so that we are as competitive as possible, so. But to your point, the feedback that we received is along the lines of the scoring criteria and our folks, Tom, being led by Tom, is incorporating that feedback into the application.
Okay, so you, you're already kind of doing that and had that opportunity to gain insights as to that whole dynamic, so. And you're right, Friday's the due date, there's not time to do what in essence I'm, I'm asking. Okay, thanks.
Okay, thanks, Grant. Anyone else, anything else? Okay.
We have one more item for discussion, which is fiscal year twenty twenty-three, twenty-four budget calendar.
Thank you, Your Honor. You will recall back last winter when we were working on the fiscal year twenty twenty-three budget. One of the items we took away was to revamp the budget process. Ultimately, we're looking to reach higher so that we're providing the best budget for the citizens or the residents and for City Council. So in doing so, the first step really was being mindful and intentional on the timing of items. And the budget calendar helped to align this. So we started by engaging the community in a survey. So the community survey is really the first step in the budget process. One might think it's the budget kickoff, but it actually starts well before that. Next, we saw the strategic planning work session, which was held on Saturday where City Council collaborated with city staff to work on that plan. And then you will notice that we also included the sanitary sewer discussion because it is very related throughout the calendar that was provided on June ninth in the council packet. One thing to keep in mind is we're not able to provide every date for every conversation that we have. Different items will be brought forward to City Council as items are prepared. And also, depending on how those conversations go, we may have additional conversations. So as we look through the calendar, I do have it broke up by quarter on the screen. In the July to September timeframe, we're looking at a review of the financial policies. Those are the inputs that kind of lay out the parameters for us in, in developing that budget. The fiscal year twenty-one, twenty-two annual report that will come out this year will include the Capital Improvement Program component. One thing that we have heard from City Council repeated times is that you have not seen the C I P, Capital Improvement Program. So we wanted to make sure in the calendar that we had several touchpoints on that C I P for City Council. The first one being the state of the state where we at with our existing. The environmental scan is really intended for more of what private sector might call your SWAT analysis where you're kind of looking at your environmental factors, your political factors. What's going on in the outside environment that is going to, you know, cause costs to increase or have impacts to our revenues? And then the Capital Improvement Plan discussion, as you see, will occur numerous touchpoints with City Council. In the October to December timeframe, that is when departments will be submitting their budgets for review. We also have three reports, three very important reports that are due in that December timeframe, December first. The annual urban renewal report, the TIF certification report to the county, as well as the annual financial report. And then come January one, we do see our valuation data. There is a public hearing requirement if we exceed our property taxes from prior year by a hundred and two percent. And then, of course, there's the budget work session. Council has all of this information. I do have three additional slides, but I figured while this one is up. I'd pause and let City Council provide feedback on the specific calendar and then I'll bring it up high level.
Any questions on the calendar? Grant, do you have anything on the calendar?
No, sir.
So I also kind of wanted to show where are we going. The budget is really just one financial component of the overall picture. So you can see on the left side, your different factors that kind of play into and inform the budget, the strategic plan, the C I P and the comp plan. The budget itself has many, we're working on that five-year financial plan, hence the forecasting component there. But the other part that we're working on is also aligning accounting to budgeting. Previously, the budget was under the City Manager's Office and there was a little bit of a disconnect between how we were budgeting and how we were accounting for things. So another component that we're working on really is looking at that chart of accounts. For instance, this last year, we pulled out transit. There's other areas, economic development is one we're pulling out, we're looking to pull out in the coming year and really just segregating out the transfers. So that you can see the department budgets more clearly where money is going out versus the transfers just simply between the funds. But overall, we are working towards those performance measures and more routine accounting and reporting. We had done, started a quarterly report and then it kind of stopped for a while there. Looking at the budget. Looking at the budget process, it's important to remember that it's really a continuum. It continues. It it doesn't begin and end while the fiscal year does. The budget as a process Continues throughout, and the why are we even bothering with this budget process? It does help the decision makers make the informed choices about the provision of services and promotes stakeholder involvement. And just the very last slide. Budgeting isn't easy, but we are really looking to provide the best high quality of service to our Residents and provide the accountability, transparency and trust. It's not easy as The wants or the needs will always outweigh our resources, but ultimately We're reaching higher with our process.
Thank you. Questions? Go ahead, Steve.
Not no question, but just really a comment. And again, since I've been on the City Council, the comment I've Made before is I think the residents of our community should Year to year to year, as more years go on, feel more comfortable on how this city is being managed. I've seen the the manner in how we've been doing things continue to improve. The Systems we're putting in place, the procedures we're putting in place. So what you're presenting here with the calendar, Again, it shows a thoughtful, well-planned process That everybody throughout the city is a part of. So it's not just your department. It's every department Obviously gets incorporated into that. So I think everybody should be very Much more comfortable that how the city is being managed Is getting better every year. So I guess that's my comment. That's my observation in my five years at City Council.
Can't agree more. I've been up here since twenty, since twenty thirteen, and They the increase in in processes and thoughtful planning And Transparency and how we do things has just been consistent. And I just I think that that explains why we saw Such a significant increase in the in the community survey in terms of trust and in city government. I think that does, it does get noticed in the community, and people feel More confident in what we're doing and that we know what we're doing and how we're handling their business. I applaud everybody for their constant vigilance on that. We can never rest on our laurels or stop. There's always room for improvement, and I really appreciate everyone's work to continue continually reach higher To do better, to to serve our residents More effectively and and to make everyone proud of where they live. So yeah, any any other comments? Thank you. With that, I think that brings us to the conclusion. Correct? Okay. Thank you, everyone, for for being here today, and we'll see you on Thursday.